The regular meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council for February the 4th, 2020 is now in session. Please join me in a place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, are there any amendments to the agenda we'd like to make at this time?
Yes, please. Mayor Ben, I'd like to propose that we, item number four, the presentation by our Dare County EMS folks be put off till the April council meeting, first meeting in April.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor of the motion made by this, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Now, you had a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So move.
Do I have a second? Have a second down here, Leo?
No, I made the motion.
Alright, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he made the motion to approve it, I seconded it.
Alright, thank you. Any further discussion of that? All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
We now have an agenda approved. You had a motion, counsel, to approve the consent agenda, which is a council meeting minutes of January the 7th, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Leo. All in favor, counsel?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. At this time, I'd like to recognize Officer Eric Brinkley for his five years of service to our town. Officer Brinkley, if you'll join me up by the podium, and David Cole, please come with him.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little bit of background, first I'd like to also introduce and have his wife Tara come up. That's nothing, you gotta give a speech, too. Just a real quick rundown, Eric, I can't believe it's been five years, of course, it probably felt like five years to you. But he also, he comes from Currituck, he has almost a total of seventeen full years in law enforcement. Sergeant Brinkley is a true asset to the Southern Shores community and to the police department. And he guides his, he guides his officers well, so.
You need to get Tara in there.
One more thing. They became grandparents for the first time yesterday. I waited over sixty-five years for that to happen. Our interim town manager?
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have a brief report for y'all tonight, or a couple of brief reports. Starting with planning and permitting, there were thirteen zoning permits issued in the month of January, twenty-seven building permits issued, those consisted of two single-family dwellings, four additions, two remodels, four accessories, six repairs, and nine others. There are currently seventeen single-family dwellings under construction in the town, and the total amount of fees collected in January was eight thousand and twenty dollars and fifty-seven cents. With respect to the town planning board, they will be meeting on February 18th at 5:30 PM. The purpose of the meeting is for the board to hold an election of officers, and to begin discussing the process of updating the town's flood damage prevention ordinance, and adoption of the new flood maps, which I'll be touching on later tonight. Any questions on those numbers or information?
I don't have any.
If not, I'll move over to a interim town manager report, and it's very brief as well. I'll touch on Capitol Street projects first, and then the South Oldwood Trail walking path. Surveying is still underway for the Sea Oats Trail Street Improvement Project. The preliminary plans have been finalized for the Hillcrest Drive Street Improvement Project. A meeting with the adjacent property owners will be scheduled soon to review the plans with them and give them an opportunity to provide input and ask questions. The Dewberry Lane Street Improvement Project, those plans have been finalized, we've met with the homeowners, adjacent homeowners, and that project will be going out to bid sometime soon. Lastly, with respect to the East Oldwood Trail Street Improvement Project, RPC Contracting and Barn Hill both bid on that project. RPC was the lowest bidder, their bid was two hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. Barn Hill was two hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. RPC has provided all the required documents for the project, and the contract will be executed most likely within the next few days, so they can get going on that. And that project completion date is May 1st. And lastly, with respect to the South Oldwood Trail walking path, construction continues, and the project, at this point, is about twenty percent complete. And I believe that completion date is June 1st. Any questions?
Do you know if the Hillcrest Improvement Street Plans are including a shoulder wide enough for people to step off the road?
On the hill where it's currently wider than the rest of the road now going up by the tennis courts?
Yeah, it's easy there.
It's still gonna be wider than the rest of the street as you go down. I don't recall the exact width of the street, or how much wider it gets at the top, but I know on the hill, there's, we still wanted to maintain, you know, a wider street so that there's room for folks to walk. As you go down the hill and further along the street, as you get towards Hickory, I don't recall what the exact width is.
Okay, that's, it's pretty wide there.
Thank you, Wes.
Yes, sir.
David Cole? Good evening again, David.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Report for January 2020, as you can see, we've had Jennifer, she kinda changed this up a little bit. But it may be a little confusing, but it's a lot more accurate, and I'll explain it. Under the incidents, you see a total of eleven, which are crimes that are reported. But you'll see seventeen total offenses. So even though there were eleven crimes reported, some of these, for example, someone was arrested for assault, they could have been arrested for a couple of other things initially as well. So those are the total offenses that were committed. And then under the arrests, we had a total of seven, with eleven total charges. For example, someone could have been arrested for assault, but during the pat-down, getting ready to handcuff them, they may have found drugs on them, something to that respect. So for January, we had a total of eleven incidents, seven criminal arrests. Under the citations, the officers, they conducted eighty-six traffic stops, they issued thirty-three written citations, and another forty warning citations, and then you'll see at the bottom is the total charges. A lot of times, officers will stop somewhere, they'll write them for two or three offenses. One could be inspection violation, and also for speed. And then under the town ordinances, there were three violations, one for failing to display, and then two for parking in a right-of-way. And we had two motor vehicle accidents for January 2020. Hopefully by the end of next month, I'll be able to present you with our annual report, which we compile and produce each year. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, David. Ed Lambacher, Fire Chief. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, everybody. Before I do the end-of-year report, I'll just go over the fire department for January 20, and we responded to forty-five calls. Little light this month, but that's typical of this time of year. Two building fires, restructure fires, one trash fire, twenty-nine medical calls, which include patient assists, one search, which ended up, the guy was just walking back from the beach, and people just got paranoid. One gas leak, one electrical problem, one illegal burn, four calls for public service, one call for service, one standby, one canceled en route, and two alarms for the month. Pretty simple for the month, that's it. Anybody have any questions for January? Okay. So this, I've kinda pulled this up, I don't have the the high-tech, I need a Jennifer, so, but anyway, we're gonna do it quick, down, and dirty, I'm not gonna take too much of your time, I know you guys got some things to do tonight, but, so just go through here, this is basically an end-of-year report for us, and we'll quickly, quickly flip through page for page. The first page, this is just showing you how I pulled the information to come up with the numbers at the end. This is just events for the year, so it would have included things, as you can see up on the top, the Christmas manio, Christmas parade, the Christmas run here in the marketplace, things like that. Things where an engine crew or a ladder crew has to be staffed. And you can see it breaks it down by each person, so you look at the top, it has Sherri Akers, and we'll follow through the night, or through the presentation, we'll follow Logan Stees, which some of you, I'm sure, have met. He's been with me since before I was chief, and now he's a full-time, he's in charge of IT in Currituck, so he still runs with us. But he's really got a pretty good understanding, he's a lieutenant with us, so, for example, he attended the cleanup, the St. Patty's Day Parade, things like that. His total hours, if you will, for the year were seventeen point five. So just for following him through, he attended seventeen hours, seventeen and a half hours of event stuff. So, that's PR, you know, passes about the kids, that kinda thing. And for the total, you can see, this is how I'm deriving the numbers at the end, I'll show you. The total hours for everybody in the department was six eighty-nine. So that's over and above all the training and everything else, as we flip through here, so, that's just the events. The next one is training, and again, this is every week, they have a chance on Saturday, go to extra training out and about. Over and above here, they go to the College of Albemarle, different classes, just like the police would. And again, we'll follow Logan here, so keeping in mind, Logan has a full-time job, he's still at two hundred and, what is he at? Two hundred and six hours, it looks like? So if you notice up on top, Jason Siak, he has five hundred and four hours. So, I mean, he has a full-time job, and he's still attending five hundred hours, plus he's answering calls. So you can see what kinda time these guys and girls are donating to the community. And again, you can see on the bottom, the total was four thousand, sixty-nine hours worth of training. So the next category would have been personal hours, personal hour spent for each incident. So this is a culmination of, if we have one call, and we're there for half an hour on alarm, or whether we're on high-dune loop for five hours. This is a culmination of all the hours, and again, just following through with our continued, we'll follow Logan here, he's at a hundred and fifty-four point one nine hours. So he was, he was on scene, on a fire truck for a hundred and fifty-four hours. And the total for the year for everybody in the whole department was twenty-five fifty. So you can see kinda adding up pretty quick. This is the breakdown for the year, it's seven hundred and eighty-one, and I'm not gonna do, I'll split through to see the actual breakdown, but just to keep it simple for tonight, basically, we responded to sixty-eight fires, four hundred and seventy-three medical calls. And it breaks down, you can see on the back page here, on the top, forty-seven working structure fires. Now, obviously, forty-seven weren't here, but we went to forty-seven altogether. The structure fires are everything from, you know, burnt food on the stove, anything, the actual flame was there. So it doesn't have to be an all-out high-dune loop, or dogwood where the house is burned to the ground. So you can see again, seven eighty-one. Now, this was interesting, and I showed this because this is the, I don't know if you can see that, because it's pretty small. Can you blow this up a little bit, too? This is a report that myself and all the chiefs get every month. Okay, if you could see, we're just concentrating on the center where it says fire departments, and you can see that we're number four in the county. So that's the top three, well, top three are all Killable Hills, they're usually always number one, because they're the busiest company down here. Then you have NAGS had twenty-one or sixteen, which is on the bypass, is usually number two all the time. And then it usually fluctuates between the rest of them, you can see, we're ahead of some of the paid departments. So we're answering, on here, it has seven eighty-two, there was a call discrepancy, I think, because I probably handled one call on the phone without putting it in the system, but you can see we're number four, we're ahead of Dock and Collington, which all have paid crews. So I think that's, again, a testament to what our members are giving to the community, the amount of hours and time they're dedicating. This really is no joke, I mean, this isn't going playing some ball, hitting some balls, this is hard work sometimes when you get called. So I just wanna reiterate that these guys or girls are really dedicating their time and energy to this organization, so. And this is just a quick summary, so seventy-three oh eight total hours, you can see special advantage, just broken down what I told you as we were going through. And then the total calls was eight forty-eight, and how I derived that was the seven eighty-two from Dare Central, and then we answered sixty-six calls in the hurricane, and I just put them under one, because it would take me forever. Every little tree call, I just don't do that, I don't have time for that, so. In a twenty-four hour period, we answered sixty-six calls, and every truck we had was staffed, so I mean, that's, you're kinda asking a lot of people to go out and cut trees for twelve hours. So just, I just want everyone to understand that we are asking a lot, but they're really giving a lot also. So, anybody have any questions? Pretty sweet, down and dirty, simple.
I have a question for you. You said there were three structure fires this last month?
No, in three structure fires this year in town, hard. When I say, when I figure a structure fire, I'm figuring like a high-dune loop, where it's actually pulling some lines going in, where there's an actual working fire inside, where you're pulling drywall and things like that. One of them was Dogwood, that burnt to the ground.
Right.
One of them was High-Dune Loop, and one of them was Three Thirteen Duck Road. Those, High-Dune Loop and Three Thirteen Duck Road were both within thirty seconds of each other.
So when you reported a structure fire, it's one that happened here in Southern Shores, it's not one you went to, like in Currituck?
Those three I'm talking about, well, those three in particular, but there are, when I say structure fire, I'm saying anything that had a flame. Like sometimes it might be a kitchen where some cabinets caught from the food, or something like that, it's not an all-out, burnt to the ground. But those, that total number includes all the structure fires we were at for the entire year, whether it was in Currituck, or Grandy, or Corolla, or Duck, or wherever. That's the total number of building fires we went to for the entire year.
Thank you, Dave, Chief.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Thank you.
Town attorney? Wes back up again?
Nope, I just got my, I was, you got ahead of me. No, I was thinking that it was the police chief's turn, but I got it, I guess he's already been. On the rare occasion, I do have a report tonight. The, the Smuts v. Southern Shores, or Smuts v. One Thirty-four Ocean Boulevard zoning appeal was dismissed last week by Ms. Smuts's attorney. So that is gone for now. And the KAMA appeal that the state is handling, I checked with the DOJ attorneys, they had a hearing today on a motion to dismiss the two appeals, and they are expecting to hear from the judge tomorrow as to whether or not their motion to dismiss is granted. So, not anything that I can tell you determinative on that, but that one's still going. But I guess the, the fact that the judge didn't say it wasn't granted today is better than, for them than, than not. That's all I have to report, Wes, anybody have any questions?
I have a quick question. You said that the Smuts zoning appeal was dismissed, and then you said, comma, for now. So what, what do you mean?
In general, it's gone. That doesn't preclude some attorney from trying to do something else. So it's something, I never put it past anybody to try another shot. There's a pretty good defense to that, if they come back with another shot in this particular case. But for now, it's, it's gone, it's over, it's done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to put a comment? In the sign-ups? Thank you, Sheila, snuck around here.
Snuck it right in.
Craig Albert? Good evening, Craig.
First off, I, I think the town of Southern Shores owes a huge debt of gratitude to Ann Surgima for all the time and effort she puts into her blog, The Beacon. I know I wouldn't have been here and know anything about the beach nourishment issue, had it not been for her blog, which I only started reading a few months ago. And I noticed that five months ago in September, two oceanographers from the field research facility questioned the beach nourishment recommendation made by Aptum. They said Aptum's recommendations were passed on limited data and short-term trends that were not particularly helpful. Dr. Catherine Brady stated, "It is very challenging to understand what is happening to our coastline." But she characterized our dune system and shoreline as being very stable. Both Dr. Brady and Dr. Khan, who also works at the research facility, offered their professional expertise to this council. The entire field research facility is at the disposal of this town council. All we have to do is ask. They're only three miles up the road, and it's free. One of the foremost authorities in the world on this issue, and we've never consulted them. Furthermore, at a March 2018 meeting of the town council, Ken Wilson presented Aptum's 2017 assessment of Southern Shores beaches. He said then, quote, "The shoreline is looking fairly stable, and there is no big rush to jump on beach nourishment." At the time, he said, "Time is on your side." I'd like to know what has changed in twenty-three months to make beach nourishment something we have to do right now? He said the shoreline is stable, having lost less than one half a foot, actually, he said five inches, from 2006 to 2017. And the volume of sand in the system had actually increased over that eleven years. I'm just saying the town should hold off on committing to beach nourishment, and start doing annual profiling of the Southern Shores shoreline, so we get some idea of what's happening to the sand on the beaches, and where it's going. We should seek input from the field research facility and others. There's a gentleman named Spencer Rogers, he's, he's a specialist with the North Carolina Sea Grant Coastal Construction and Erosion Society, and he was recently awarded the 2019 American Shore and Beach Preservation Presidential Award. It just seems to me, before we undertake a multimillion-dollar project, that we should seek more options. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Craig. Rod McOwe? Evening, Rod.
Good evening, I'm Rod McOwe, Eight Eleventh Avenue, former president of the SSCA, which I believe a few of our council members can say the same thing. And basically, I just wanted to say a few words on behalf of the SSCA about garbage. As most of you know, the purpose, the mission of the SSCA is to promote the interests of our membership and the community as a whole. And as such, we're, we would like to advocate for, for a as responsible recycling program as can, as we can find to do. I understand that we have a, in a bit of a bind, and it has nothing to do with, with decisions made by the council, but I'm hoping that whatever you have to do as an ad hoc measure, that we, it doesn't preclude us from looking at other alternatives and things that we may, may not be able to do. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Rod. At this time, I'll close, you want to put a comment? Under item six, council, old business, capital infrastructure improvement planning committee appointments. Are we prepared to make those tonight? I think we are. You want to start, I can start with you, Leo, if you're, if you're okay with that.
I nominate Jim Coranda. Well, renominating.
Elizabeth?
I'm nominating Lori McGraw. Or appointing, whatever we're doing, I guess we're appointing.
Yeah, we're appointing.
Appointing is a better term.
We're finding enthusiastic volunteers for our CIIP committee.
I would reappoint Glenn Regan, who's been on the committee for the past year and a half or more.
Excuse me, I'd like to appoint Andy McConaughey.
Andy McConaughey?
Yes, he's got a good perspective. He can help us with vegetative issues.
Thank you, Jim.
Matt?
I'd like to appoint Dan Osman. Daniel Osman.
Are we voting on these appointments?
I don't think we have to.
No, no, it's disappointing.
Each council has the authority to appoint one person, and we don't question it, I'll let you, trust that.
At least the time we've done in the past, we've just had each council appoint one, one individual, and we've all accepted that. Any further discussion about that?
They're two-year terms. Two-year terms, Craig.
They are two-year terms, that's, that's, that's the election cycle, so we'd call them that.
Yeah.
We need to formalize that probably like we have in the planning board, that's, that's the way, we look at that as that big, that, hopefully, hopefully is point, in a two-year term.
Moving on to the next item, a business consideration of amendment to recycle contract, Bay Disposal, to the recycle contract with Bay Disposal. Wes, do you want to address this for us?
Yes, sir, I'll just provide y'all kind of with a update on where we are with this. The town, we did include some information about the current situation with recycling in this past week's newsletter. We included a statement on the town's Facebook page. As you all can recall, in December this past year, we were notified, notified by Bay Disposal that the processing facility where they were taking their materials no longer accepts that, no longer accept the materials due to the current market. And the materials have been taken to a waste of energy facility in Portsmouth, Virginia. So, tonight, you have in front of you a budget amendment that would allow for Bay Disposal to continue doing that at a slightly increased rate from what the original contracted rate was. So if you all want to move forward with that, then you would need to approve this budget amendment, and authorize town staff to work with the town attorney, and Bay Disposal to amend the contract accordingly, based on the new contract amount for the rest of this fiscal year, as well as to address the, at a minimum, the number of days that's in the current contract, of ten days where one party has to notify the other of a change or whatnot, to at least thirty days. That's something we would like to change, and we would also like to include some sort of language in there that would state that taking materials to a waste of energy plant, or some other facility, other than actual recycling, should only be done on a temporary basis, while the town continues to pursue and explore other options available to get back to original recycling, or the market improves, either or. So if you all, that's one option you all have tonight. The other option, Bay Disposal, they've provided you all with an estimate that it would take to take the materials to the most, the nearest recycling plant in, I believe, Northern Virginia. They gave you all that back in December, it is a higher rate, obviously, but that is an option that you have. Then obviously, there's another option where you do nothing, and we don't collect. It's just entirely up to you all, how you all want to move forward. But at this point, the wheel-o-brader option is one option that we can consider, so that items don't go to the landfill, and we're still items don't go to the landfill, and we're still providing for a source to still dispose of those materials rather than going to the landfill. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. Also, when I speak of pursuing other options, I just learned today that there was a meeting this past week with NCD-EQ and some other local jurisdictions, where NCD-EQ has said that they, along with some nonprofit groups and other interest groups, want to help out, they want to be able to help out the current situation in this area with respect to recycling. And I was not, we did not attend that meeting, I was not notified of the meeting. So I contacted the individual with NCD-EQ, the representative who met with these folks, and kind of asked him about what was going on. And he told me that NCD-EQ, some nonprofit groups and other interest groups are looking at trying to bring a new recycling process, new processing plant to northeastern North Carolina. It would be a group effort, and they do have one company that has demonstrated an interest. So, communication still needs to take place between NCD-EQ and this company and the groups. And the representative with NCD-EQ told me, or I told him rather, to keep me in the loop on what's going on here, and he said that he would. The reason we weren't involved at this point was because they wanted to keep the group small, this is what I was told. But that's just an example of another option that may come up, so the wheel abrator option would be something that we could do temporarily. I did confirm with NCD-EQ, I think you have in your packets, a waiver that was granted by NCD-EQ that allows Bay Disposal, the state approving them, to take these materials to Wheel Abraer. And let's say, for example, this new, this proposed facility does get legs and that doesn't move forward, should it go beyond the three-month timeframe that's included in that waiver, then they obviously would extend that waiver until that plant is operational or another option is pursued. So that's where we stand right now, if y'all have any questions about that, I can try to answer.
If this plant doesn't come into being what happens into that three-month waiver there, does it get extended?
I don't know.
Does Bay have to go back through?
I don't know, I would like to think that the waiver would be extended until some option is available.
And we find something viable.
And we find something different, I don't think, I can't speak for NCD-EQ, but I don't think that it's in their interest either to continue burning materials as opposed to recycling them, but I think they understand that that's.
I would prefer recycling, but I don't want all that stuff going in the landfill either.
Correct, and I think that's where everybody's, what most folks are thinking. I can't speak for them, but I would assume that the waiver would be extended until something changes, either the market improves or we find another option. That's what I would say to that.
This budget amendment keep things going for how long?
The rest of this fiscal year.
The rest of the fiscal year?
June 30.
When is the contract up for renewal?
The contract is good through June 30 2021. So come.
2021?
Correct, so, budget discussions, your upcoming budget discussions, we'll have to look at providing something in the budget for recycling as well as solid waste pickup to continue the contract.
Okay, those may be things better discussed or planning coming up.
Are you, the terms of the contract would not change, you just renegotiate some of the wording to give a little extra time on termination and?
That's where, I believe that's where we'll, the direction it'll go, we're just looking at amending the contract to reflect, if you all approve this amendment, it'll reflect that contracted amount, as well as the notification timing, as well as some sort of provision that would allow us to make sure that taking it to a waste of energy facility or any other location other than actual recycling is only done temporarily, until another option is available or the market improves.
Thank you Wes, this is a four or five-part motion.
Yeah, there was a lot of things in there, you're gonna have to help us out with that one.
If you all want to move forward, if you want us to move forward, working with Bay Disposal to amend our contract that would allow them to continue taking all recyclable materials to Wheel Abraer, you would just approve the budget amendment and also at the same time authorize town staff to work with Bay Disposal and the town attorney to amend the contract.
So moved.
Second, and I'll second it. There's a lot of moving parts there.
Yes.
Any further discussion council, we got a motion and a second.
Just that that was a trick to get him to make the motion so we wouldn't have to write or?
Go ahead.
So, one of the options you gave council was to do nothing? Is that what you said?
That is an option, you all could choose to not provide recycling if you wanted to, I'm just saying that.
Were we not recently informed? That we have a statutory requirement to offer recycling as a local government?
We do, but by you doing nothing, there would most likely be some sort of breach of contract, and we would have to move forward from that point.
To do some recycling some other way is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not do nothing in terms of recycling because we?
Correct.
We are obligated to?
Do nothing in terms of nothing with this.
With the contract amendment?
With this contract and what they have requested in the increased contract amount.
Right, right, right.
And whatnot.
Okay, I understand, thanks for that clarification. So then another question would be, can the Town of Southern Shores fulfill their recycling requirement by saying there's opportunities to go to Kitty Hawk, or there's opportunities to go to the county or whatever? I mean, how do we define this obligation to provide recycling?
I would have to confirm, I'm not 100% sure about if that would be something that would, you know, make, put us in compliance with that. I would have to check into that.
I'm not advocating for that, I'm just trying to, again, understand what our obligation is as a local government.
Right, and I would have to do some research into that as well.
Okay, okay.
I was just gonna say, with that motion, the budget amendment only addresses this fiscal year, and as you're amending the contract, I would like to amend it in such a way that we can reevaluate the contract at the end of this fiscal year, whether it be termination, whether it be changing the scope of the contract, just give us some flexibility so we're not locked into an automatic price increase going forward to the next fiscal year, and we can explore other options. And some of this came upon us very fast, this is a stopgap in my view, and you amending the contract opens our options up moving forward in the next four months. And I think that was what you initially phrased to us, I just wanted.
Yes sir, we can certainly include that in the negotiation.
Well, there is a 30-day term, or you're proposing a 30-day termination.
Correct.
Either party could terminate it even at the end of the year, if we look at it, or if we find some other source, it could be terminated.
Yeah, and some requirement that they're keeping in mind with recycling.
Yes sir, we can include that in the discussions.
Any further questions council?
Not on the motion, but I have a question for Josh, if he's up for taking it.
Sure.
But we don't have to do it now, I mean, we can vote on the motion, it's unrelated. You want to hear your question now?
Yeah.
Come on up Josh, it's okay.
I took a truckload of cardboard down to KDH the other day and stuffed everything in that bin, do you pick up that bin?
We do not directly pick it up, but usually it is transported to our facility.
Where does that go?
Same place.
Wheel Abraer? So even that sorted goods is going to Wheel Abraer?
Correct.
So we opted to explore a self-service facility within town limits, at the current moment, there's no market to take it, even if we were sorting glass ourselves, sorting plastic ourselves, sorting cardboard ourselves, there's no market?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I'm gonna hear on the record, thank you.
Yes sir.
Whatever I read, it tells you that it's just dried up, nobody's bought it.
I certainly understand, I just think that's important to be on the record, as we're navigating this recycling conundrum.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a whole challenge, I mean, I read stuff where there's, you know, town after town is just stopping, canceling altogether, where then it ends up in the landfill, which I don't like that either.
I think that's part of the negotiation that Ags has gonna deal with tomorrow morning, so.
Well, some of their stuff I understand. Goes up and goes to Wheel Abraer.
They take it to Bay's facility.
Unless, unless Ags has got another source of buyer.
No, they don't. I think the motion covers what my goals would be, I just really wanted a clear-cut reevaluation in June, maybe some more information, I think it all covers that, so I mean, I'm prepared to vote.
Council, a motion on the floor that's been discussed, all in favor of adopting the budget amendment number six, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion's made and carried to budget amendment number six, thank you.
And you'll be working with Ben then on developing the contract?
Yes sir, we will get the town attorney involved and put the discussions with Bay Disposal.
Thank you.
The town manager and I met last, you were there too, I think, once Elizabeth? We met with the town manager last Monday, a week ago I guess, and this was, this issue came up, and at that time, he indicated they had a pretty good-sized building that was nearly full of cardboard, it was packed and ready to go somewhere, and a lot of cans had already been crushed and packed and ready to go somewhere, and they had no market for them, so we're not alone in this. Consideration of a consulting firm for hiring a new town manager. It's tab four in your book. And the firms that we were able to get proposals from are Enfocus in Kannapolis, North Carolina, Developmental Associates from Chapel Hill, North Carolina, and the Mercer Group in Raleigh, North Carolina. And I think some of us made a number of phone calls over the past week or 10 days, talking to people who had used these firms, and with good success, in some cases not so great, but for the most part, we had positive feedback on all the firms and the people who had used them. So, I would make a motion that we, knowing that the Mercer Group comes highly recommended, and they also were, also spoken very highly of by these firms, these other companies, we just values we talked to, I would propose that we ask the Mercer Group to help us in our search for a new town manager.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I was, based on the conversations I had with different mayors about dealing with both the Developmental Associates Group and the Mercer Group, the indications were that both of those firms would be excellent consultants for the town, so I don't think we can go wrong. Hopefully Mercer will accept our proposal. And if not, then?
We have a fallback position.
We have a fallback, that's the way I look at it.
We're going to plan B.
Yeah.
Any other comments council? Any, all in favor of accepting the Mercer Group to conduct our manager search, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
The Mercer Group's been selected Sheila, thank you. Item D on the old business is a consideration of a potential beach nourishment project. At this time, I'm gonna ask the town manager to address this, I may have a couple remarks, and all of us may have after he finishes his presentation, Wes?
Thank you again mayor, members of council, don't really have a presentation, I'm just gonna try to explain where we are right now and where we could move forward from here. With respect to the county's contribution, I'll start at this point, when the DEC associates came and spoke at your workshop meeting in January, their presentation included different models for the different options. And if you noticed in all of the models, the county contribution was a good amount. And they had claimed in one of their slides that they would be able, that the county would be contributing around 50%, something to that point, and had been previously reported and discussed that the county would only be able to contribute seven and a half million, possibly eight million. Well, it has been confirmed that DEC's models are correct, should negotiations be successful. So it does seem that the county has had some discussions, and the DEC folks have had some discussions, and their models showing the higher contribution to cover debt services correct. So, it would be, you know, if the town wanted to move forward with a project, we would have to obviously talk to the county and negotiate with them to see if that is actually the case. So I wanted to report on that part first. At the last meeting, or your workshop meeting, you also gave guidance to town staff to draw up some proposed municipal service districts. We started working on that, based on your guidance. And so, the steps that need to occur with respect to municipal service districts, as requested by town council, would be that we would have to obtain the assessed value of properties in these proposed municipal service districts from the county assessor's office. So, we spoke with the county assessor's office, and as most of you know, the revaluation is currently taking place. The Board of Commissioners, or I've been told that the assessor's office will be presenting the revaluation to the Board of Commissioners, Derek County Board of Commissioners, at their February 18th meeting. And then, about a week after that, or sometime the week following that, notices will be sent. So, we, town staff, are saying that we're gonna hold off on putting together our, or putting together MSDs, or the values, sending the values to DEC associates to come up with what it would actually cost for folks in municipal service districts, should they be approved. Hold off on obtaining the 2019 numbers, I think there was some interest in getting the current numbers. Well, we think it's best, and the county assessor's office agrees, that it's best to just wait until we have these, the 2020 evaluation numbers. The assessor, the assistant assessor, did confirm that there will be, in some cases on the oceanfront, near the oceanfront, significant changes to the evaluations, which will affect obviously property values and the value of the penny, of what a penny generates in the town. So we feel that it's important that we just wait until we have these 2020 numbers, and y'all use that to start your conversations and go with whichever direction you see fit. So that's where we're gonna go from this point, is once we have those 2020 numbers, we're gonna, first, we'll come up, we'll finalize the proposed MSDs based on your guidance, then we will obtain the numbers from the county assessor's office for those MSDs, and then send those to the quarters, and then they will run predictions, options for how much it would be should you institute or establish an MSD, should you move forward with a beach nourishment project. We hope to be able to provide this information, or hope to obtain all this information from the assessor's office, us drawing together the MSD maps, as well as the quarters putting together the options for you all to talk about and consider. We hope to have this to you at your March 3 meeting, if not, then it will have to go to your March workshop meeting. So, that's kind of where we stand right now. I can try to answer any questions on that, if, on any of that, if you have any questions.
That helps a lot, to know the process.
I would add to what Wes said, that we're in the research stages, if you will, we're trying to find out what the cost would be, how to handle that cost, how we could schedule the project should we decide to go forward with it. Of course, we have, we have the county keeping watch on what we do, and making sure we're moving in what they want to see is the right direction. We're gonna try to do what's best for our town, recognizing that we are, while there's been no pressure, there is certain concern at the county level that we, if we want to participate, we need to let them know fairly quickly. But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna personally push it to the point where we make a hasty decision and then regret that decision later on, so I think we should let Wes get the numbers together for us, see what they say, what DEC says and how that plays out, and then we sit and look at the big picture as far as benefits versus negatives.
We have to get to the go no go.
That's right, that's right. Any other standing council that you want to discuss or say?
I'd like to just make a comment, that this is not a subject that any member of council up here is just sitting on, and, I mean, we're pretty heavy, heavily involved in this with discussions behind the scenes and trying to steer a direction to get this timeline to, you know, there's, there's a lot that goes on. We can even throw plugs in sometimes at federal and state officials to help them see our side on that, but, anyway, back to this beach re-nourishment, thanks Wes for that report, that helps a lot to know where things are.
Yes sir.
At this time, I'm gonna ask Wes to present the new flood map issue to us.
Don't lose my voice.
[laughing]
Next, I'm just going to present a brief presentation on the flood maps adoption process. This will be very brief, short, sweet, and to the point. And if y'all have any questions, feel free to interrupt me, stop me, ask me at any time. So I'll start with just a little history and background. The current flood insurance rate maps for Dare County and the town's southern shores are dated September 20th, 2006. The new flood insurance rate maps were released June 30th, 2016. So it's taken this long to hear from them that the new maps will become effective June 19th of this year. So between now and that time, the flood damage prevention ordinance, which is the town's flood ordinance, must be updated, and the flood insurance rate maps that were released must be adopted prior to the effective date of June 30th, June 19th, excuse me. This has been previously reported, but I'm going to go over it just one more time. The current firms versus the new. Structures currently in a V-zone, oceanfront, 250. New map, structures in a V-zone, 122. That's a difference of 128. Structures currently in an A-zone, which is your soundside and near oceanfront, 1,035. New map, structures in an A-zone, 237, which is a difference of 798. These maps are available online only. You can find them at that link. It's the Friz website. So obviously, we have some concerns with these maps. Local officials from the county, ourselves, and municipalities have been meeting regularly since the preliminary maps were released in June of 2016. The discussion is primarily focused on public awareness of historical flooding, property owners dropping flood insurance policies versus potential flood claims and their impact on local, state, and federal levels, responsible building practices, and developing higher regulatory standards for construction. AO zones are also now included in the new maps in southern shores. I've been told that they were once in the maps, I think, back in the 90s. But at any rate, we do have some of those now in the town on these new maps. The AO zones do not address shallow flooding resulting from rainfall. And as everyone knows, most of NC-12 and most of the avenues experienced significant flooding during Hermine and Matthew due to rainfall. In addition, further concerns, a significant number of properties are being removed from the special flood hazard areas into the shaded X or X zone. We are concerned that many property owners may cancel their flood insurance coverage as a result. This could result in higher rates if the future maps revert back to kind of what we have in place at the moment, or they could establish a higher base flood elevation. Another major change is that the soundside AE zone base flood elevation is decreasing from seven feet to four feet. And as we also, as most folks know, we have a two-foot freeboard requirement currently in the town. So with the seven-foot base flood elevation and our two-foot freeboard requirement, that requires folks to elevate, other than parking, access, or storage, up to at least nine feet above sea level. So their change, their base flood is going down to four feet. So even if we kept our two-foot freeboard, it would only be six compared to what we have in place now for nine. And that's in the AE seven. So as a result of all these concerns, we are recommending, and I say we, I'm saying the southern shores, the municipalities, and Dare County, we are recommending to our local affected elected officials to establish a local elevation standard of eight feet. Eight feet is not going to be what applies to every town or the county, but that's the number that we are going to propose or we are recommending based on, and these maps will be presented later on. We have had maps produced by the county that shows elevations throughout the town, but a local elevation standard of eight feet above sea level town wide. In that case, lateral additions to existing structures will be allowed with reference level elevated to or above the regulatory flood protection elevation that was applicable at the time of original construction of the structure in the shaded X and in the X zone. This also applies to remodels or renovations of existing structures where the reference level located below the current applicable regulatory flood protection elevation do not increase the footprint of the structure. They also may be authorized at the existing reference level or higher in X or shaded X zones. And lastly, elevation certificates would be required for projects in the X and shaded X zones. But they could, based on the current draft ordinance that we have in place, which hasn't been finalized, that could be waived if contractors and surveyors show on a survey what the elevations are, confirming that if the elevations are above the regulatory flood protection elevation, and they they could be, that would be waived. So the next steps involved, we're going to present, or make give a presentation, town staff will present to the planning board at the February 18th meeting. We will have maps that will help kind of just show some of the areas that are coming out of VE zones, going into X zones or AE or AO zones, as well as elevations in different parts of the town, number of structures affected, et cetera. That'll be all taking place February 18th. The planning board will most likely start considering and discussing the actual language in the draft ordinance, which is an update to our current ordinance, most likely at their March 16th meeting. And between that and an actual planning board recommendation, we will hold an informational slash stakeholders meeting, where folks can come and we can answer as many questions as possible and provide information to stakeholders, and maybe have some other state, give stakeholders an opportunity to get, provide us input and see what their thoughts are. You know, we want to try to all be on the same page as we move forward. And then, you know, council adoption of the new maps and the updated ordinance no later than June 19th. That concludes my report on where we are with the flood maps. Y'all have any questions on that?
Thank you, Wes.
I'm sure Matt will probably have some questions.
Did they change the datum that they use? How do they determine?
Not yet.
Not yet?
It's still 88.
Oh, okay, good.
It's coming, though. The planning board, is this the only item on their agenda, February 18th?
Indilection of officers.
Indilection, okay. And then the stakeholder meeting is late March after the planning board meeting?
Uh, yes.
Is it possible to move that ahead of the planning board meeting?
Well, we could.
Unless you're thinking...
There would be another planning board meeting.
Okay.
There would be another one. So the planning board will be, our thoughts are that the planning board will begin their discussions in consideration on March 16th, then have a stakeholders meeting. Planning board recommendation possible is what I had in there. That would come after the stakeholders meeting.
Okay.
If that's what you're getting to.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then April, they would meet.
Yeah, so it might, it might be another two. It could be one or two more meetings after that. Who knows? But yeah, that we wanted to be able to make sure that they had an opportunity to speak, and then the planning board will continue their discussions after that.
Perfect.
Yes.
Well, these maps, if say we didn't do anything, would they become automatically?
You asked that, I believe you asked that question with the last meeting, because I said I wasn't sure. But the biggest impact would be is that we would lose our community rating system.
Okay. That's what I want to make sure.
Yeah. So it's important that we move forward.
Yeah, I understand that. Just want to make sure that we weren't going to lose that part of it.
Right. Yeah.
We got to have some action. We can't be fiddling.
We're safe. We're safe if we make sure we're in compliance by June 19th.
Yeah, thank you.
But more information will be provided as we move along through this. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Wes. I would add just a couple of comments. We've been looking at this for a long time, and it's been the subject of discussion at a lot of meetings at the county level and obviously the state level. The meetings I've gone to, the concerns have been the same. The people who made the decision about how these maps would be drawn in Raleigh didn't look at some pretty key, pretty key things that you should have looked at. Some of the, some of the major storms of the 2003, for example, 2000, 2005, pretty serious storms were not, were not considered. The other thing that was not considered, it was no, it was no credit given or consideration given to rainfall. In other words, rain events were not considered to be something you had to be concerned about. We know for a fact that they are something you have to be concerned about right here in southern shores. So we had reservations, and that's what why Wes made the point of saying we're going to establish some of our own rules as far as elevations and so forth, because you, we just don't want people to think they're they're safe from ever flooding when they probably aren't because of rain. That's all I have to say about it. Anybody else have anything else?
No. The only thing, and probably beat this drum going forward, and there's not a big audience here, but keep your flood insurance.
Yes.
You move to an X zone, keep your flood insurance. You'll get a reduced premium, and you will be safe when the maps go back, when they change the model.
And so your neighbors keep their flood insurance?
Yeah. Yeah.
Just promote it.
General public comments open again. I have Craig Albert wishes to speak again. Craig?
You know, you all said you're so concerned about the town. Jim says he's worried about a timeline for this beach nourishment. If you're so concerned about the town, how come in four years, we never ask for any other opinions from any other resources? How come we never consulted the facility three miles north of here? How come we've never consulted anybody else? We're relying upon aptim. And then, in addition to aptim, then we go out and we hire DEC. And so what does DEC say? Here's what DEC says. You have a choice of general obligation bonds or special obligation bonds. Now, why would they ever say, we suggest you use special obligation bonds? Do any of you guys know why? I'll tell you why. Because that's how, the only way they can get paid. That is the only way they can get paid, because that's the only way they can get municipal service districts. Special obligation bonds are revenue bonds. Right, counselor? The revenue bonds, paid for by the revenue from whatever district you've set up, whether it's sewer and water, whether it's a health district, whatever. The revenue is paid for and segregated when it comes in to pay off that debt. General obligation bond and a special obligation bond, as applies in southern shores, is exactly the same. The revenue's the same. The only, the only difference is the statutory language in this, in North Carolina provides that you can't have a municipal service district unless you have beach nourishment. That's one of the options. And you can't have beach nourishment and without a special obligation district to get a special obligation bond. It's not a revenue bond. Whether it comes in as a special obligation bond or a general obligation bond, it all goes to the same place. It all goes to the general fund. Right, counselor? It's exactly the way it is. So basically, what we're saying is, we're going to have a special obligation bond, because if we had a general obligation bond, we would have to have a referendum. And therefore, the council would have to put this to vote for 2,500 people that live in this town, instead of you five making that decision. So basically, what you're saying is, you five have more confidence in your ability than the 2,500 of us that live in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. At this time, I'll close. Public comment. Counsel, anybody have any comments?
I just got a couple here. The tourism board did meet on January 16th, where all of us got sworn in and also elected new officers for 2020. The chair is Myra Ladbone. She represents the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce. Vice chair is Jeff Pruitt. He represents the town of Kitty Hawk. The treasurer is Pat Weston. She represents, she's the Hatteras Island at Large representative. The assistant treasurer is Urban Bateman. He represents the Dare County Board of Commissioners. And the secretary is Webb Fuller, who is on the town of, represents the town in Agshead. I was appointed to the financial committee and the personnel committee. And then just another one, I don't know. Most of you travel, I think, that are here. Don't forget, October 1, 2020, you're supposed to have your real ID, driver's license for identity. Has a little star in it. And understand, if you, unless they extend it, traveling could be a little difficult unless you've got your passport with you. So go down and get that handled, because there'll be, there'll probably be a rush later in September. The other one is tomorrow. The Red Cross is having a blood drive at Holy Redeemer from 12:00 PM to 6:00. If you remember, they had one back in December, yielded 173 pints of blood. That was a record. So thank you that did donate. And you can donate, you can set, donate by making an appointment. You can do that online, or they'll take walk-ins. And it's 12 to 6:00. So if you can, come down and donate, and there's always plenty of good food. That's all I got.
Thank you, Leo.
Uh, just to try not to be too repetitive, but just want to make sure people understand just how valuable our volunteer fire department is to the town. The chief gave a, gave a, you know, his annual report, and he always gives us his monthly reports. And it really, you know, was obvious to me, the number of hours that these folks give. And that's just amazing to me. Also, the the contribution that the fire department makes, because they save the town a lot of money by just being in existence and doing their job. So just want to say thanks. We appreciate all that you guys do.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Madam? No comments.
Just real quick, I just wanted to mention that I met with the Government Education Access Channel, commonly, or also known as Current TV. Met with them today, and this time I got a real feel for what they are and how they might be able to benefit us. And so I'll look forward to giving a little more report on that later. But recently, there was also the State of the Dare, a presentation that attracted about 250 people. All five of us up here, elected officials, were there. And that's kind of typical of a lot of things that the other council members do in attending meetings. And many of these meetings are, it comes, you find yourself in a forum where you can talk to the other elected officials out here, our state-elected officials, and even our federal-elected officials about issues like the Mid-Currituck Bridge, or, you know, transportation woes, cut-through traffic, beach nourishment. So I guess I'm kind of winging it here, but what, the point I'm trying to make is, between our last council meeting and this council meeting, I went to probably an average of two or three meetings a week on town business. I have no doubt that the other council members up here aren't just as busy also. I know, because I see them at some of those same meetings. But anyway, I just thought it would be interesting to mention that. We're not just sitting up here making decisions in a vacuum.
Thank you, Jim. Anything else?
I'm going to save my comments for later. The motion to adjourn, counsel?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll second. I'll second. I'll second.
Thank you for the second.